Yes. Nate, if he can hear me, Jesse's in the, no, he's not.
Hello.
I was about to say you were, are you in an airplane? You're in a train?
I'm on a, I'm on a train, just left New York City.
Oh, you hope you're not in the quiet car.
No, uh, yeah, that should be okay.
Good. I remember being in a train from Bath to London many years ago before this became, and there was a guy in the quiet car with his phone. And uh, he was talking the whole time and I, I eventually got up and walked down the thing and walked back and halfway down the carriage, I, I, I talked loudly to my friends about six or eight seats up ahead. And I said, you know, this guy's running the country from the train here, some, 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 and half the carriage started laughing.
That's great.
I don't think he heard the thing. I don't think, I think he was oblivious. It was just, it was just a gag for the rest of the, rest of the passengers to enjoy or whatever. Okay, uh, sure that those are.
Hey Jesse, I made you host and Fred isn't, isn't attendee if you could promote him.
Okay.
I'll be listening. I'm in the car. And I won't be able to participate too, too much for the first half hour, but.
All right. No, no worries, Nate. Thank you.
April ninth.
Hi Fred.
Here he is.
There he is. Hi Fred. All right. Good.
Are we expecting Karen?
Uh, I don't know. I think she did reply that the dates worked, but.
I can't remember.
I haven't heard recently. Yeah.
And I noticed the Janet's. Jen.
Yes, I saw that too. So let's open the meeting and then, yeah, maybe we can bring Janet over. Okay. So hello everyone. Welcome to the subcommittee meeting of the planning board, uh, Wednesday, April ninth, seven oh four. I guess we'll do a roll call attendance just for the record. Uh, so please indicate if you're present, what's your name? Bruce Colton.
I am here.
Thank you, Brad Hartwell.
I am here.
And I, Jesse Major, I'm here. Karen Winter is not here yet. Maybe we'll join us later. Okay, uh, there wasn't much, I didn't put together much of an agenda. Uh, there are a bunch of things I thought we might talk about. First, I guess we don't have any new minutes since the last meeting.
Oh, good, because I was thinking I hadn't done my job.
There is one outstanding set. I'll get to the next time along with this one. It's been, I guess, a full month since we've got together. Um, and so I did not detail anything for us to discuss tonight, but I thought there are a few topics I had in mind, sort of open to other suggestions. As you can see, I'm on the train, so I think the signal should be pretty good, but if it gets a little spotty, I might turn off my camera. So that will probably help, but I'll still be here.
Okay.
Okay, um, so unless there's objection, I see only one attendee who is Janet McGowan. Uh, suggest maybe we bring her over just to have presentation.
I agree.
Have issue with that possibility? Great. So Janet, I'm going to promote you to your panelist as well. If a lot more attendees show up, we might have to reverse course and go back to a, and we're in future.
Hi Janet.
Hi, thanks for having me.
Sure. Um, so, uh, top of my mind, and I know you're in the car, listening, is the ADU. Not just the, where the bylaw stands, but just the last couple of days, some things have come to my attention, probably you all as well. Um, that the ADUs are starting to happen, right? Um, and I kind of wanted to think creatively with this group about what that means that we don't really have a bylaw yet responding to the new uh, state legislation. And what levers there might be available to influence anything, if at all, or maybe the answer is there's nothing. Um, so one example is, uh, I think because I guess because I'm in a butter or diagonally on the butter, I got notice about, I think it's two, I blank on the number on Fearing Street. It's the corner of Fearing and Lincoln. Um, it's currently a rental house. Uh, it's the southwest corner, I'm sorry, southeast corner. And they're planning to build an ADU. And so this is going before the local historic district, I think on Monday is the meeting. And so a few things occurred to me about this scenario with the historic commission, particularly since we're not allowed to, well, seems like we're not allowed to put in any, many design standards or things like that. That's what KP Law sort of took out of our proposal. And so maybe Nate is available, or maybe if one of you knows better than I do. What can the historic commission even do in this scenario of anything? I don't know if you all have thoughts about that. Is it worth us showing up to the meeting to discuss? You know?
Well, um, my guess is that insofar as it's a protected use, um, we can't do anything, but, um, but I don't know that's true. It just feels that that's likely to be the case, but on the other hand, um, it's not true with a single family house. A single family house has to be subject to the certificate of appropriateness. So maybe I'm dead wrong and that just as a, a house is subject to a certificate of appropriateness. So must an ADU, and I think, uh, we simply asked Nate, is that true Nate? Do you understand that to be the case?
Uh, no, the, um, local historic district's not zoning, so it can regulate ADUs according to its, the general bylaws. The state is trying, you know, has said that a local historic district has to, has a limited review, but the building commissioner and myself have a different opinion. And so the local historic district could, you know, in my mind, deny the ADU if they don't think it's appropriate. And it, you know, the protected use only applies to zoning and local historic district isn't zoning.
Interesting.
So.
Well, so that's, yeah.
So does that mean Nate, you and the building commissioner can look at the plans even before the meeting and just say, no, this is not appropriate? Come back with another design or?
No, it has to be a determination of the, it's the certificate of appropriateness. I don't think the building commissioner can make a determination of a certificate of appropriateness. I would think that that would have to be the local historic district commission.
Right. It's the commission. So the, the building commissioner, we're not saying whether or not this ADU is appropriate. We're saying that the local historic district bylaw, because it's in the general bylaws, is different than zoning. And so what KP Law commented on was essentially our regulations as, as they would be in the zoning bylaw. So she was saying that as a protected use, there should, there, we can't have too many design guidelines that aren't, you know, clearly objective or, you know, meet the, the regulations for being reasonable, but a local historic district is different. And so, you know, staff's opinion is that the local historic district in Amherst can regulate ADUs according to the local historic district bylaw. So the commission could find that an ADU isn't appropriate, but, you know, they take it on a case by case basis and the idea is that they'd have to provide feedback. So you know, eventually an applicant could, you know, present an ADU that is appropriate.
Gotcha. And, and can the, I mean, I suppose the, uh, the historic committee would, is required to give some kind of feedback to say, this is not appropriate, but here's what would be? Or, or they can just say, no, this is, we don't think it's appropriate. Up to you to figure out. I'm wondering how that backboard works.
They have to, they have to provide some reasons why it's not appropriate, you know, whether it's the, you know, the, the architectural style, the massing, its placement on the property, you know, its details in terms of materials or uh, you know, kind of window patterns. And so there has to be some reason and I, and the idea would be that an applicant could then, you know, the applicant can ask for guidance in terms of what would make it reasonable or appropriate.
Janet, I'll use your hand. There's one more question for Nate. Is that? I'm curious in this application, was there back and forth already? So do the applicants understand that's the case? Or are they going in assuming this is an ADU by right and it won't be a problem?
Uh, good question. I'm not sure. I think the applicants know that this isn't zoning. I don't know if they realize, you know, that there could be, you know, the, uh, the staff person for the local historic district has asked for more information and said, we need more to help, you know, review the project. And so, you know, I, I guess, you know, we can make them aware that this is, you know, something different. You know, yeah.
The other half of that question is, uh, do the, does the local historic district commission know what it's dealing with? And my guess is, uh, we're going to have to learn. Um, and I'm on that commission as, as is, uh, Karen. It's a seven person commission. Um, so two out of seven will have some indication of this, but I doubt that Karen, if you were to ask her the, the question that you asked to start with Jesse, uh, which I gave two answers to, one which were diametrically opposite. So I, my guess is that nobody on that commission is going to be any better informed than I was when you asked the question. And so I guess that that's uh, what's, uh, that'll be the starting position, uh, when this applicant hits the, uh, uh, you know, hits the open meeting.
Yeah. No, good, good point. I'll, I'll email staff and let them know to reach out to the commission and the applicant and, you know, provide some context here. This is, this is, this is the first one, uh, to have any, any kind of review.
I think managing the applicant's expectations around this would be very important and saying exactly that, that normally we would expect a determination in the meeting. That very seldom doesn't happen. But here is a circumstance when it might be expected that this would be a continued hearing because of the peculiar circumstances. And then if the applicant is apprised of this, because the, actually the last meeting that the local historic district commission had was with a gentleman who wanted to replace his roof and put PVs and so forth on. And, and he sadly, uh, arrived at the meeting twenty minutes late and we had, uh, determined that we needed his presence and we had closed the meeting. And he was mightily annoyed that we weren't able to reopen the meeting for him. He didn't seem to be mightily aware that the reason that all this happened was because of, he didn't bother to show up on time. But it, he, and he dug in from there. Uh, so, uh, applicants can be, uh, have a difficult time dealing with the arcane aspects of some of our, um, this particular commission. And so Nate, I think we really should make sure that the applicant is, uh, aware that this is not an all, this is not a normal thing.
Yeah, we can do that. When, when is the hearing is out?
I think it's the fourteen.
I don't know.
Fourteen, thirteen o'clock.
Yep, all right.
Monday at three.
Okay. It's on my thing here, so I guess I'll be, uh, ADU request.
While we're talking about some of these details, I don't, here's a comment for you Nate, and I don't know who decides when the meetings meet. But, you know, during day on a weekday, it's pretty limiting, I think, for a lot of people to be able to participate. Uh, myself included. This one obviously I'm making a time, but just, just my thoughts on that. Um, Janet, go, go ahead.
Um, I'm impressed that you're, you're training, you're doing this during the training. I thought you were on an airline flight and I was like, wow. Anyway, um.
It's a training exercise.
Yeah.
It was a bad pun, Bruce. So.
Thank you. I'm glad you appreciate that.
I, I, Nate, I have questions like, has, I think the LHC, LHC did say no to like a duplex on a lot with a duplex. Was that, like, was that last year? And so some of my questions are like, you know, usually the LHC is like about the look or features of something and tries to make it fit into the neighborhood, not necessarily match everything, but you know, at least connect to it in some way. And so my questions would be, can the LHC limit the number of people? You know, because I think the ADU by law says you can't limit the number of people. And I just pictured, you know, you know, a thousand or nine hundred square foot could really pack some people in. Um, you know, what about excessive parking spaces? Cause they're kind of want more than two. Um, and I think more of the ADU things that people are always thinking about like, oh, don't require so much parking. It's an ADU. And when in our situation, a lot of the neighborhoods don't want to have lots turned into parking lots. Um, another example of how it hits differently here. And then I don't think they can say no to the use of it. Um, unless they think it's really damaging. I, I, I don't think that would be hard for them to say no, unless the way it's positioned or look, or it's just a really awkward spot. I mean, am I, am I right Nate? I, I haven't gone to that many of those meetings.
Yeah. So the local historic district has nothing to do with use or zoning. So they couldn't, they can't regulate occupants or number of occupants or even what it would be used for. So, you know, someone could propose an outbuilding that could be used as, you know, like a home occupation or, you know, something else. And you know, they, they, they don't regulate that at all. They really need to stay away from what the use will be. It's really just the aesthetics and kind of site placement on the lot. I do think parking is something that they are looking at changing the bylaw to regulate. Some communities do. It's really difficult because again, you're not regulating, you can't regulate the cars parked there because that's the use. You can regulate the asphalt surface as long as it's visible from a public way. And so there's been some discussions about, you know, our bylaw already limits the number of parking spaces in the setback. If you have over five spaces, it needs a permit, a land use permit. So we craft a local, uh, you know, part of the bylaw for a local historic district to say, if there's so much pavement, whether it's for say six parking spaces, then it's regulated through the bylaw. It gets a little tricky because again, it's, you, you can't say, well, we don't like the cars parked there. It's really about the asphalt on the, on the surface or whatever surface treatment it is for the parking that is, you know, inappropriate.
Yeah. Go ahead.
The other thing I was gonna add, about a year ago, maybe more, I think it was ninety Fearing, which is right behind me. This is where they had proposed three buildings. This is also their historic district commission I went to. And the conversation then was about the, the nature of the, the property, wasn't even a design standards, it wasn't. And so there was a strong argument made, I think by myself and others, that it just didn't fit with the neighborhood. And that seemed to win the day with the group. So to me, that clearly was something that I think we should express. Um, in this particular case, it's already kind of a parking lot on Lincoln side. There's often six cars parked there. I go by twice a day. Um, and so I don't know how they're going to manage that, although it's sort of a different issue.
Yeah, the, I was just saying that the night, the ninety eighth, right, the ninety eighth hearing actually wasn't, I don't even think it was a hearing. I think it was just an informational review by the commission.
You're, you're right. Yes, you're right.
And, and, and so, you know, it did stray a little bit from exactly what the commission's role is, but I think it was helpful. I, you know, I don't, the applicant or property owner may not thought it what, you know, thought it, but I think everyone else thought it was a helpful, um, exercise. It was something similar for what we're calling one eighty Fearing, you know, the, the new, um, properties on the corner of Fearing and Sunset. And so, you know, the thought, I think the thought was with ninety Fearing, we thought the applicant might come back and have changes, but then they, they, you know, they withdrew or didn't, didn't, they never followed through. So, you know, it, it still could come back, but we haven't heard anything in a, in a while.
Yeah. Uh, Bruce, go ahead. Also Pam, I see you. I'm going to bring you over to the group as well.
Yeah.
Bruce, go ahead.
The, the, the thing to, to know about the local historic commission, oh, and by the way, for our purposes, it's probably worth also noting that for the longest time Nate was the staff person for this commission. So it's, he has, uh, years of, uh, direct experience of, uh, supporting us. Um, but the local historic district commission is the first cab off the rank. Uh, it, it has to make a declaration before anything else can really happen. I mean, it's, it's logical. It's a simple question to be answered. So it's first. And what that means is that it's also the time and everybody just piles in and we get, regardless of the fact that we have a limited regulatory capability or jurisdiction or mandate. Uh, we have all manner of conversations related to stuff that we have, that's out of our Bailey, out of our purview. But it's a good cathartic exercise for the committees to practice them, their, 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 their positions. So we don't discourage it particularly. I mean, the chair always says, know that this is what we can do. But we don't call people out of order when they start talking about all the things that are concerning in the neighborhoods, particularly when you do something that was proposed for that site. Uh, so yes, it's a, we get all sorts of, uh, uh, topics raised and conversations, uh, running. Uh, but we try our best to know that what our limitations are. And the issue next Monday will be that this will be, this will be a new experience.
Yeah. So you mean, I can show up and complain about the groundhogs in my back game?
Uh, if, if the chair, if the chair allows you to continue after the first ten seconds, which I'm sure she will, because Nancy's a sweet person, then she knows how to run a meeting.
All right, go, go ahead Pam.
Thank you. Um, and thanks for letting me in. I wa- wanted to go back to the comment about the, the note, the memo to the attorney general. And I wanted to double check to ask if the, the fact that, that we have a reasonable, um, let's see, how did I say it? We currently reasonably rec- regulate the number of unrelated persons in an, in a dwelling unit and that it's equally reasonably, um, reasonable to regulate our, um, our protected ADUs. Was that, was that in fact in the, in the memo? Or is it just something that we talk about, but didn't get, didn't get addressed? Thanks.
It wasn't necessarily in the memo. We talked about the student home definition and some other kind of occupancy restrictions, not specifically, uh, the number of occupants. Uh, and you know, we said some other supporting.
I, I thought it was a fairly strong argument that because we, we already regulate for unrelated occupants, that it was completely reasonable to expect the same of our, our protected ADUs. But it sounds like that message didn't go through.
Well, I think we can regulate it for single family homes, but not, it, it's clear we can't do it for ADUs.
It was, it wasn't clear to me. That's why I wondered, was hoping that it would be in that memo.
What I thought.
The building, yeah.
What I thought was that for unrelated people in an ADU would kind of regulate itself. I mean, the, the size of the building would be, uh, am I, uh,
Well, no, no.
We imagine that it might be five.
I think by code, and I'm going to get the numbers wrong, but as I understand it, the first person requires a hundred and fifty square feet and then every person after that is a hundred square feet. So you could put seven or eight people in a nine hundred square foot ADU if you, if you arranged it properly.
I wasn't thinking of the, of the, the math of this. I was thinking of the, the, the acceptability, the occupational acceptability.
I think, I think investors, investors don't, don't look at it from that perspective. I would look at it from that perspective.
What about the tenants?
Well, but, but, but right now it happens all over town. Like this, this exact house, I guarantee you has at least six people in it every year.
Yeah, but if we've got, if we've got a nine hundred square foot unit, are we, are we anticipating that there's, there's a high likelihood that it'll be five people in there?
Oh yeah, for students.
There's no cap, absolutely.
Be two persons per bedroom. You could do three bedrooms pretty easily. That's, that's, that's the standard, um, house in my neighborhood is a ranch house with, a small ranch house with three bedrooms and you could put two people in each bedroom.
But the small ranch house is, is going to be twelve or thirteen hundred square feet and that's what bigger than.
I did this, I did this a long time ago. I looked at all the square footage of the ranches along Southeast Street and in Valley View. They're really small.
But we also have to remember with logically, I agree with you Bruce, but these are students who spent the first two years in a dorm room of hundred square feet with another person.
Yeah. Well, I, I guess I'm, I'm informed.
So, so I think they'll be happy to do that. I mean, they're just expecting that's going to be the arrangement of like.
Then I don't, I am with Pam. I don't see why, uh, we shouldn't extend the same obligation to the dupe, to the A, A, ADU that exists in the house. I can't, I can't imagine why we wouldn't do that. Nate, is there any, but you suggested that we might not have the, uh, the authority to do that. Is that what you're telling us?
Right. So the foreign related is in zoning. And so as a protected use, there's a limited ability to regulate that. I think, you know, the rental registration and some other say bylaws or programs a town have may, may address that. But it's a really difficult thing to, to regulate, given it's a protected use.
Yeah, I mean, not to talk in circles, but I think Pam's point was, we're asking already the attorney general if we can do some other things. That seems very reasonable. We already have this rule or in, in our bylaws. And so it seems like anything else that got built should follow. It's common sense. Our town's decided, determined that's needed. So it should be needed for this also.
And even if we turn down the first time, it sounds like a seed that needs to be sown for, for a, a regulatory or legislative adjustment. Because, uh, there, uh, along with our argument for the student home is the argument that Amherst is different from every other bloody community in the state.
That's right. We're unique.
And, uh, and some people might think, oh, you precious little bugger, you know, and I say, well, uh, you can tell me what you like, but uh, we have responsibilities to look. uh, we have responsibilities to look after the interests of the town. That's what we were appointed to do. And, uh, and Mr. Attorney General, take note that we are doing that and we are telling you that it's true, that they are different. And there's consequence, you know, there's a consequential impact to something that you're doing in across the state that has a different consequence in our town. And we want you to know that. And we want you to help us do something about it. That would be that, I mean, I might change the tone a little bit if I was writing in the letter, but I think, I think that's the, uh, that's the short paragraph.
Yeah. Well, you, I think at least I missed the attorney general. Uh, but Pam, I also wanted to, I can't remember if you were there at the last meeting. I was kind of asking about interactive council, town council and K P law. Like if council has ever tried to push something forward that KP law thought was not gonna be okay.
Wait, say, say it again. I didn't understand your statement.
If, so, so in this example, our town lawyers came back and said, you can't do any of this stuff you wanna do. But what I was trying to ascertain was, does our town council always abide by that? And say, well, our lawyer said we shouldn't, so we don't. Or have there been instances where someone's made a compelling enough argument that the council should act even against that advice? So really, we're asking, is it, how hard do we push on this if our town lawyers are saying, no, you can't do that?
Jesse. I think that, I, I think you said it two different ways. I think one way is correct and the other way is arguably not. I think they're probably not telling us we can't do it. I think they're counseling us against doing it.
Correct.
So, so with that in mind.
Yes.
Uh, that's.
I would say typ- typically we would respect the, the feedback from the, uh, the council for the town. Um, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't push back if it doesn't make sense. And, and this is a, this is a case where I, I don't feel that kowtowing to, you know, the very, I, I would call it fairly limited, um, flexibility of the new protected ADUs. I mean, the, the, the point, and you all have said this, I'm just parroting what you've said. That is, the point is, we're looking to try to create more housing for year round residents who will contribute to the community. Uh, workforce housing is what we need. And so that being our goal, it's, it's perfectly legit to not sway the production of ADUs toward student accommodation.
You mean, because we're, we're busy doing, solving that problem in other better ways?
Jenna, go ahead.
So I, I've missed a few meetings, so I'm a little bit out of the loop. So I'm guessing that the letter or the, whatever Nate drafted is to the attorney general and maybe to the legislature saying, yeah, we're different. And I, I think that, you know, I don't know what's in this thing, but one of the reasons we're different is we have all that density in our zoning code already. Like, we're not a single family house district. We have ADU, you know, is more liberal than anything in the state, you know, so we, the building commissioner makes this decision unless it's, you know, a certain size and stuff like that. So I think Amherst's record in multifamily housing and, you know, putting housing into the downtown and village centers and increasing the housing stock should be touted. Like, we're not, like, not NIMBYs, but we're just saying, not a student in every backyard kind of thing. It's that, you know, we need the workforce housing. What we have is, we're just, oh, we're building all this housing like crazy, like no one's business in Western Mass, and it's being filled with students. And we need to make space for year round residents and regular folk. So I think that's a strong thing to say, hey, we're, we're way ahead of the curve in terms of it's just that we need to have space for, for the rest of us. And I think that could go in and that also says Amherst is different. We've been looking at this issue for a long time.
And, and I would add that the population distribution is, I don't even remember the numbers now, but it's like, what are we? Way, 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 way higher in the percentage of, of student, people that are, you know, fifteen, eighteen to twenty-five than most of the state.
I think we're like at seventy percent plus of students right now, so.
Hmm. Oh, that might be true. It's the age group number that I remember, which was fifty-four.
Yeah, fifty-four.
You had those in here.
Have some of them in my head. I, I'm gonna not change the subject entirely, still the need to use, but, um, the question that you asked at the beginning or early, uh, Jesse was, um, we don't yet have a bylaw. Um, uh, uh, what should we do? Uh, and I think that it probably isn't a bad idea to watch what happens with one or two of these as they go in and see, um, uh, I mean, that's, uh, that's gonna help, I think, because it may be that things aren't, don't materialize exactly or as we anticipate, uh, certainly as worst case scenarios. Um, but, um, I suppose the, the problem is if we are somehow, um, I mean, the problem is we really don't know, there's things we don't know. So we're prob- the first, uh, uh, first of these ADUs, whether we have a bylaw or not, because I think essentially our bylaw, uh, I mean, we're, if the person wants to have a thousand foot ADU, then we do have a bylaw. But the current bylaw is for, um, maybe it is for ADUs generally, I suppose, up to a thousand square feet. So maybe we do apply it, but we basically, um, apply the, uh, work with the, with, with the state. We have to work with the state bylaw and, and, uh, and I think as we allow one of, two of these through, and the building commissioner particularly, we, we're gonna learn something. So I think we, my, my, so maybe it's my question to myself and to the rest of us. How concerned should we be for the first one or two of these, or the first handful of these? That we don't have our own crafted bylaw that we, um, watch. Because the, the state law is very, very thorough, I think. We've been through it and we noticed how many things they're, they're, they're talking about. And we can identify the, the problems with, uh, terminology such as habitable areas and gross areas and things like that. Um, that we've been trying to address a little bit in our bylaw and, and getting hung up occasionally. Uh, do you, uh, the rest of you agree that, uh, that allowing, being less concerned about the absence of a, of our bylaw, um, is significant in the, in the initial phase of this?
My, I'll be totally honest, my concern is more that, my sense is even if we put something forward today to go to council, it might be nine months before it becomes a bylaw.
Uh, that's true.
And so, and so one or two, sure. But in that time, with more and more for sale ads saying, perfect for ADUs, come with your big ideas, like, you know, I think that's a length of time that will be considerably more than one or two.
I'm not advocating that we, we stop working on it, just the, how, how, how fraught would she, would, should we feel that we haven't managed to get this thing?
Right. I mean, I, I don't think we have a trust. It's, it's here, it's in front of us. All right. Pam, go ahead.
So had a quick me, had a meeting today, um, Nate, we had a meeting today with Rob Mora. And one of the conversations was about ADUs. So we discussed, you know, what's on the CRC plate and the next upcoming items that, that want to be processed. ADUs is, is clearly on the top of everyone's mind. Um, and that um, adopting, adopting the bylaw as it, as it, I guess, needs to be. I almost feel like adopting it is the way we want it, um, and let somebody push back. But in any case, that's, that is high on the priority list. So it would be, it will be, um, I'm gonna try really hard as a CRC committee to push the solar through um, and try to get public hearings started at least by the middle of July. So we're pretty well through the document, um, but, you know, we've got some more slogging to do. So that's the, that's the goal for solar. And when we have to split a meeting between several topics, it takes a really long time to get through a topic. ADU would be right up, right up against that, right up with there. And if we had some kind of feedback from the attorney general before that happened, uh, I could see the planning board discussing and sort of blessing whatever document Nate, you're, you're putting together. The planning board is putting together and push it off to the, to the council and saying, please refer this to planning board and CRC for public hearings and start that process that, that increases its, uh, its urgency because there's a timeframe that we have to meet. Uh, so in terms, it would not be nine months. It would be, it would be much less than that. Um, and that would certainly be something that we would get done before, um, not, maybe not fall, early fall, but certainly in the middle of the fall to the end of the, certainly before the end of the year.
Yeah. So Nate, I don't have an, have an update. Uh, I think the last you told us, Nate, you sent, but you sent it to them, but we really have no idea of the timeframe we might hear back. So a week, a month, three months.
Right. No update. I mean, so I will say, although we don't have a new, you know, ADU bylaw, we do have a bylaw that the building commissioner can use. So we have, you know, the way we categorize ADUs isn't necessarily applicable anymore. But we do have general requirements in our bylaw. There's quite a few of them. Some can't be applied, but some the building commissioner can apply. Uh, and, and, and also, given the, the discussions we've had and, and, you know, what we have as draft in terms of allowing it for single family homes only and how we calculate square feet, those are things the building, the building commissioner is, is, is using as well. So I feel like we, you know, we are providing guidance, uh, to the commissioner uh, and, you know, and to the inspection services. And then we do have the bylaw that allows for certain things to be looked at or to be met. So, you know, what, what I sent, what we have, what I sent to the, uh, attorney generals and what we have is, you know, a, a simple definition that meets the state's, um, you know, definition, and then, you know, like a dozen requirements, you know, half of which are already in the bylaw. So I, I think we're okay. I think some of it is, you know, how, you know, how much are we gonna push on, say, the student home definition? Or some design standards that, you know, KP law doesn't think, you know, doesn't think is, um, consistent with the, with the state law and, and, and regulations. And then, you know, we could, we could wait to hear back from the attorney general. Doug thought, you know, the planning board could wait maybe until the first May meeting and then we would just kind of push it forward as a zoning amendment anyways.
So Nate, I have a que- I have a question. When do you think, when do you think the planning board would be ready to push that up to the, um, town council for referral?
I mean, we, you know, I, I think we could, knowing, knowing it goes, you know, it will be reviewed again. I feel like we could get something for in May that could be, you know, provided to the planning board in a zoning amendment format and they could vote it. You know, I, it, like I said, I think there's probably a few pieces of it that they might, there might, you know, be discussions on, but I think we could have something in a, you know, bylaw format for a ma- one of the main meetings.
So that's great idea. Um, I was also just wondering.
So that's probably, sorry, I'm gonna finish up. Um, so, uh, council meets on the May fifth and May nineteenth.
So we could, uh, planning board meets on the seventh and the, uh, you know, um, later, you know, the twenty-first, but.
Twenty-first.
I was gonna circle back to what you raised, Pam, about the four unrelated and ADU. Cause that's not currently in the draft we put together because
Right.
we're focused on the student home definition, sort of accomplishing even a bigger restriction, right?
But, yeah.
But I was wondering, okay, would it be more efficient strategy to put forward the state bylaw? Protected use ADU and just add the four unrelated rule. Not the student home definition necessarily at first, just so we can get our protected ADU bylaw on the books. With at least that much. And then wait for the attorney general to get back to us. And maybe then, then come back to the student home definition, because frankly, the conversations I've had three or four times at different groups around town have not, for the most part, been very difficult conversations about the idea of a student home definition. So I think that's gonna be a very protracted process.
I think if the intent is to, is to help limit whoever is in there unrelated, it's more likely that it's gonna be a student. But, um, I would say the cap on the number of occupants is probably the most pressing for any, any neighborhood that I could imagine.
Yeah. Yeah. Jenna, go ahead.
So I, I'm just doing my legal thing. So if you just say you can't have four unrelated people, that doesn't seem to contradict the language of the new ADU bylaw. Cause there's time to like prevent you from saying no to students and all these other things. So you're not capping the number of people. You know, you could put twenty-two people in there if you could, you know, hit, get past the building codes. That might be a way of sneaking in some sort of restriction, um, by the AG. So that might be smart, smarter than getting the whole town up in arms about student home. The other thing I was thinking about, and I can't, I, I'm, I'm sorry to be, and Nate, uh, help me with this. If we started to put some design standards on single family homes, saying they have to fit into the neighborhood, could that be a way, could then we apply that to ADUs? Like, I can't, I kind of remember language sort of saying, you can't add extra stuff that you're not doing to single family homes, but I haven't read this recently. Would that be a way of backdooring? Like saying, you know, you know, the building commissioner can say, this is a preposterous thing. Sorry, Bruce. You know, and it doesn't fit in the neighborhood if it's a single family home and then can apply that same criteria to ADUs. Is that another way of going around this kind of thing? I haven't read the statute recently.
Uh, probably.
Probably yes, we could get around it or?
Yeah, it just, you know, typically zoning doesn't regulate single family homes because that means any single family home would need to have so, you know, would be subject to it. And so I don't know, you know, unless it's, you know, the conditions are generic enough, like we're not, we don't really want any single family home necessarily to, right? Be having a land use permit. And so, you know, you know, for instance, if we say it has to, you know, be compatible with the neighborhood, that's pretty subjective and I'm not sure, you know, what, how, you know, so does that mean you couldn't have a modern home in a, in a home that's mostly, you know, mid-century? You know, Gothic or Victorian and, you know, or, you know, mid nineteenth century. So I, I would, I just wanna, I'd guess some of it would be what, what, what would those regulations look like or how would they be interpreted to then also to make sense and then could be applied to, um, ADUs?
Well, we give that power to the building commissioner on ADUs that, um, are a certain, he's the one who can apply that. Um, I mean, he's, you mean, everybody has to get a permit from the commissioner, right? Um, is that right? And so he's already doing that for ADUs of a certain size, depending on the original house size. So we could just say, single family homes, you know, the building commissioner can decide it's not fitting in the neighborhood or proportional or whatever it is. Use mimicking the same language in the ADU, so they both have the same criteria. Um, and, you know, I think, you know, we could just trust his flexibility. Um, I think part of the ADU thing was to not, I mean, I know you can put an ADU in a front yard, you know, it's not to build, you know, a concrete bunker in your front yard and call that an ADU. Um, I do know people build homes out of concrete though, you know. I'm just trying to think of ways to make it easy to get something through that, that protects the town.
Yeah. Uh, Pam, go ahead.
Uh, I was just thinking of some wording, if we had something to the, to the effect of, um, in order to reflect the occupancy management reflected in our current zoning limits of four unrelated persons in dwellings, we would apply that same, um, that same characteristic or that same, uh, I don't want to use the word restriction, that same to, to our ADUs, whether they are, uh, protected or not.
Yeah. That's, that's a good start. That's, that's a good starting point.
Yeah.
And the reference to protected or not means if they're over a 900 square feet?
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I mean, so if we, if we sort of talk about it as occupancy management that we, that we as a town have been sort of driven to, led to, that, uh, it makes sense to not only, Jesse, did you just go into a tunnel?
Uh, no, they dimmed the lights for some reason. I don't know why.
Where, where are you traveling?
I'm coming back from New York to Amherst.
Okay.
Suddenly got dark.
Yes.
Anyway, that's my two cents.
Suddenly you've turned into Darth Vader. A smiling face Darth Vader, which is obviously a lot better.
Okay. So, so yeah.
I think this is, I think this is a, a constructive, uh, conversation. Oh, look at you.
He's back.
Yeah.
The lights came on.
We haven't heard from Fred. Um, what are you thinking about all this, Fred? You're muted.
Yeah, uh, not now. Um, yeah, I, uh, I think we basically should go, go forward and, um, you know, put the best arguments we can with it and, uh, and, and most especially, uh, detailing the ways that Amherst is different than really any other town of the 351. And, um, so we have the responsibility as the planning board to, uh, to, uh, address that. And, uh, uh, get that off the ground as quickly as possible in case that we have to totally revisit it.
Hmm.
I mean, let's, let's get our, sort of our act together and, uh, everything we want. And if it gets turned down, the language of turning it down will tell us how much of it we can save.
I, I agree, Jesse. I, I think that the, 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 the conversation that was started by, I don't know, all of us, I suppose, that suggests that A, we should move to get this, uh, from the planning board to the council. Probably on or before the, the May 5th meeting. Um, that we should, uh, obviously we're waiting for the response from the Attorney General on the student home, but we can let that uh, out there. Number three, we can go with the, with the, um, the phrase that Pam came up with, um, um, occupancy management. Occup- we can, we can put in an occupancy management, uh, paragraph there into that bylaw. Uh, this, and this is what I think the Housing Commission, the Housing Committee can recommend to the full board. And that should, I think, be our salient contribution to the board. That would be your report, uh, which I guess you should give.
Yeah, next week.
To, to Doug, you could give it before, yes, actually, you could do it beforehand because that's a week away.
Yeah.
Uh, and with a view to getting that into the, uh, document that we discuss and approved and forwarded. And, uh, and then as Fred just said, we, then we've got two things before the Attorney General. And both of them are predicated on the adverse impact of this generally good law across the state. But, uh, an unintended consequence in, in an isolated jurisdiction.
Yep. Agreed. Agreed. Okay. So once another ADU comments, uh, yeah, I totally agree with what you've said, Chris. I'll, I'll write something up, get it to Doug and Nate before the meeting. So hopefully we can discuss, uh, next week's meeting. And when we move to vote to move it forward, we'll see how it goes.
Jesse, can I ask, can I ask please your, your home, um, email again?
Oh, thank you. Sorry. I said it wrong. It's J M A G three R.
J M A G. There it is.
Number three. Yeah.
J, J M A G three?
Three R, like instead of an E R, a three R.
Uh huh huh huh. Got it. There it is. Thank you. I'm going to write to, I'm going to write it to Nate, write to Nate and to copy you.
Great. Thank you, Pam.
Good.
Okay. Um, did other people have topics for us? I had a couple of other thoughts. Uh, do you have things you want to talk about?
Um, I'm trying to think. Um, this was, this was a, this was a, a good product, uh, which
Agreed.
it was nice that it was contributed to by everybody. Um, oh, I know what I was going to say. I will, um, uh, report, uh, to the board on, on, on the, the, on how the, this issue was discussed and considered by the Historic District Commission.
Right.
It may not be relevant and it may be, it may, the report may simply be that.
Yeah.
But I think it's, uh, the board might be interested in any wrinkles that arise through that conversation.
Yeah. Um, Nate, I had a question for you. I couldn't remember the date at which Doug had asked you to prepare the North Amherst overlay or draft for us to consider at the full board. Was that, that wasn't for next week, right? It was for May, early May?
Yeah, e- even if it was for next week, I thought maybe, um, it won't be ready.
Right.
Um, but you know, it can be for May. I will say that a, a number of residents have contacted the town after the last planning board meeting, uh, because it was picked up in the Gazette and Indy.
Yeah, I saw that.
And so, you know, it's fine. They want to have meetings and discussions. I think, um, yes, I, I, you know, I think we're at the beginning of this process. I think it'd be good to have, you know, maybe some, you know, have a more pl- planning board meeting in terms of what we think. It's, you know, maybe some dimensional standards or some ideas and then, uh, you know, reach out to the, you know, have some other meetings about it. Um, you know, I, yeah, you know, for instance, I think, you know, I think there are a few properties that would be really advantageous to, for this. Um, you know, but it is interesting, the question of, you know, if, you know, given the outline of the overlay, you know, is it, is there too much density or, you know, is it too many, is it just too many people, um, in terms of different things? I know Public Works had said, well, if, if it is that much, we have to replace the sewer line. Um, it's really, it wouldn't be able to handle all that, the main sewer line down North Pleasant. Um, I haven't heard from police on it yet. I can ask directly. Um, you know, I think some of it would be, you know, then reaching out to property owners and neighbors. Um, so yeah, I don't, you know.
So, so really, what, really, my, my real question was if you wanted to use our subcommittee two weeks from now to, if you wanted to prepare a really rough version, just for us to go through with you for some input, if that's useful in your process.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And even if we just have some really, um, if I, even if I just have some, have some basic things, I think it would be good to talk about it. Uh, yeah. Yep.
Okay. So let's, let's plan on that for our next meeting. Sure. Be happy to do that with you. Um, what else? I was going to ask this group for some history, which I started looking into and I just didn't have much time. Has, and I'm probably not the purview of planning board, but has rent control ever been a topic in our town?
I haven't heard of it, but then I may have not been here. Fred will, Fred, Fred's there. Fred's the one to answer.
Uh, yes, uh, the, the answer is yes. Back in the, uh, I'm going to say the seventies. Uh, and partly the early eighties, um, and for example, if you look at the complex that is just north of the, um, Proctor Farm Elementary School driveway. Uh, which looks like an apartment complex and, and it, and it really is. But every one of those is a condominium. And the reason that it was, they were transitioned to condominiums, that's, and that happened in a number of places because it looked like the town, uh, was going to adopt rent control. And, uh, that was a way to get around it. And, uh, there, this, particularly in liberal communities, this was a, a very active subject of this, uh, public debate. And then, uh, something fairly unusual happened. A, uh, a bunch of citizens got together with an initiative petition uh, to make rent control illegal throughout the state.
Hmm.
Uh, and by some remarkable circumstance, I, I still can't quite believe it, but it passed. And it is the law of the state. And, uh, so, uh, it has taken rent control off the political agenda of municipalities such as this one that would, you know, politically be inclined to consider it. But it's against the law. And it, it was all because of a citizen initiative petition that ended up becoming law by vote of the state.
So I was right.
Uh, I guess that answers my question.
But Jesse, but Jesse, if you're, yeah, it's right. Um, I think it's a worthwhile topic and I think it's something that right is gaining traction. I think you're just about to mention that. And I think, um, yeah, I think there's some renewed interest in that discussion. So, you know, I think it's something that could be discussed. Yeah.
So, so if you're, for the last few, I was reading about East Hampton's issues and they're discussing rent control. Um, and yeah, it occurred to me our town might really benefit, uh, just to, to, to keep rents under control. I mean, it's right, that's right in the title, right? Um, both for students and maybe allowing portable non-student rentals for, for permanent residents. So I don't even know where that conversation starts, to be honest. I'm just curious what the issue is. So thanks, Fred, for that. And I, I assume that's more of a, would be like a CRC council issued to bring up, not, not planning for exactly. I mean, housing, some committee maybe, but.
It could be a citizen initiative in Amherst to bring something forward.
A recall.
Yeah. Yeah.
And it's, it's, it's obviously so complex with so many, you know, caveats and, and special conditions and special circumstances, you know, for every single one of our, of our rental units or something, but, but still it would, it's a really good conversation.
But it seems to be a pretty, I mean, I'm not a developer, but I imagine it would make it less attractive and
Yeah.
storm in and build lots of things if your profit is limited by some kind of rent control. Janet, go ahead.
I'm interested in the fact that people decided to build condos instead of, um, apartments when they thought they might get regulated. Um, on rent control, Mayor Wu in Boston was talking about that, bringing it back and limiting increases to 10% a year, which is really high for an increase. But you know, just, but just when you're talking about this, I, to me, I, you know, how can we not just, how do we, you know, what we have is we're building lots of housing, lots of rental units. They're very, very expensive. And I'm wondering, like, if you're going to say, okay, you can go to six stories in, you know, the overlay district or giving a developer an extra story. What if you make, you can agree to that, but if the top story or one story is condos? Or, you know, it's moderate income housing or something like, you know, so if you get the extra stuff, we're getting some base of people who can, I mean, it's not a gift to rent an apartment that's like $2,500 for 450 square feet. Like you don't get anywhere with that. It's not, so not great for regular people, you know? I wonder.
I thought I.
Go ahead. Sorry.
No, I dropped you. Please.
No, but I just think it's like, you know, we don't have, we don't have this population increase in our area, but we have is high, high rents and now high housing costs. And so how do we, you know, for Amherst, we need more people who live here year round and don't give all their money to the landlord. But also, um, we need lower rents or lower costs. And either we build 50 million units until there's, half of them are empty. I just don't know how, you know, we just don't need any more expensive rental units, do we?
Yeah.
Like, how do we get more? And if a developer is asking for more, you're giving more, requires something in there that benefits, you know, the regular town people.
So, so I totally agree with you. I, I, during the U Drive overlay conversations that have been going on for a year now, I guess, I feel like I raised that question three or four times in different ways. I was thinking more mostly of the commercial spaces to try and conserve some of existing businesses. But at one point I know I asked about, are there ways we can basically insist on reduce, you know, reduced rents or limited rents. And what I walked away with in my mind was no, we can't. Certainly not as planning board. That could not be part of the firming or whatever process it is. Uh, Nate, Nate, maybe you want to comment on that, um, before we do this. Like, is that ever something planning board could do or the town can do in exchange for, like you said, fourth floor, sixth floor, whatever?
Sorry, to do what again? To like actually set rent?
Not, not, well, yeah, to say, okay, this number of units has to have, um, a rent that's not more than some percentage of market value or, or, or something like that. Not exactly affordable housing limits or maximums, but more, uh, some way to essentially cap the rents of some number of units.
I think, um, I think it has to be, uh, part of inclusionary zoning and you could, you know, say, you know, I, you know, like we've said, there's certain income calculations that are more than 80%. So it would be like lowercase a affordable. It wouldn't be on the S H I, but it has to, we could do it through affordable housing. Otherwise it, it's not, I don't think it's legal. Um, uh, you know, I mean, sometimes I, you know, I do think like, for instance, we don't, we're not very good about apartments in town in terms of our zoning. And there's been discussions about updating the apartment definition. It's limited to 24 units. But you know, what if in some instances we said, you know, we remove that restriction? And then we have, you know, some greater affordability requirements or we, you know, we say, uh, you know, after so many units, some, some percentage have to be up to 150% AMI or something. I, I, there's ways to do it. I, I think we would just have to um, see what works. And you know, it becomes a local, to me, it be, it becomes a local restriction that's locally monitored, monitored and enforced. I say 150% AMI because HUD calculates that number for another program. And so we wouldn't, you know, the town staff wouldn't be calculating, we would, I don't really want to be calculating AMIs. Um, so that HUD, HUD calculates it. And then it's something that, you know, we'd probably have to hire out someone to, uh, monitor that because we're part of the regulatory piece and it's difficult to monitor it. But I mean, there's probably, there's probably ways to do it. It just becomes a local, it's a local, um, if you want to go above 80%, it becomes a local uh, mechanism and enforcement.
Yeah. And is that, is that at all possible for commercial as well? Or is that strictly residential, you know?
Just residential. For commercial, I think that's becomes really difficult. Um, you know, I, I think, yeah, it's, it's things to explore. I mean, I do think, you know, we offer, we could offer tax breaks or different assessments for commercial. I'm not aware of zoning uh, for, you know, trying to reduce the commercial rents.
Well, you brought up something else that I know that's not, and I thought the answer was no, that we could not get into tax breaks for exchange for certain types of development as a, as a local.
That's not, yeah, not, not through, not through zoning.
So who's, then who does, who can if it's not zoning?
That would be the town manager and assessors. I mean, it may be that we have to either pass a local regulation, you know, we could have, you know, district improvement financing. There are certain state programs or things that we could adopt, um, that allow that. And some, some might be related to some zoning, but yeah, it wouldn't be, you know, we, I don't think, say for you drive, right? When you're talking about that, we couldn't say in our university drive overlay that, you know, the commercial rents need to be, um, you know, prorated to the market. rents or something. That's, I think that would be really difficult in, in zoning. So that, you know, I think there's other, there could be other discussions about how to do that. Uh, with the, you know, assessor or town, town manager.
But, but that's sort of after the fact of some zoning in place.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Uh, Bruce.
Um, harking right back to Janet's initial question or observation. Janet, you said, I think I'm quoting, interesting that they decided to build condos rather than apartments. And I thought, what is she talking about? And as, after this conversation proceeds, I think I know what you are. I just want to be clear that I understood. Because I think you were, you were using, because I've said to myself, what do you mean? Apartment is a building type and condo is an ownership structure. Um, but I think you're saying, you're characterizing apartments as rental apartments. And the word condominiums means apartments that are for sale. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. And I was talking about apartments, condos near Crocker Farm.
Yes, I, I knew that. So, it's, so you're, you're just saying, maybe we should, uh, encourage more, uh, housing units to be constructed, uh, for sale, like, for example, Valley CDC is doing, like, for example, Habitat does on a very small scale. I'm not sure who else does that, but, uh, but it, I guess I, I, my experiences for multifamily housing, they do seem to be coming from developers who want to rent them. Uh, so what's the case for, um, making them for sale?
So I, you know, I'm just thinking about, me, speaking as a landlord myself, it's, um, you know, several of my tenants have gone on to buy condos in Davis Square, right? And, you know, whatever. So it's nice. I don't charge market rate. Um, I know these are heavy rents anyway. And, you know, I was a renter for a long time. And I used to, I, for eight years, I lived in an apartment, which was, you know, not very expensive. And my landlady said to me, you know, just think about your tenants, you know, and stuff. And so I don't think it's a, I don't think Amherst needs more expensive rental housing that's either draining the pocketbooks of parents or people, I talked to people in their twenties and thirties here who can't, would like to buy something. They can't buy a house. They can't afford the rents. Um, they can't get ahead. And so, you know, if we had more ki- and I, I, I know people who would like to sell their house and move into a condominium in Amherst and, you know, sort of downsize with their families. And we just aren't building that. And I've talked to developers and they're making so much money on rents and rental income. And that's the model. That's economic model. Um, I know you could build condos here and charge very high for them. It doesn't really answer my issue. But if you're gonna rezone, you could say, hey, you get an extra story if these are condos for sale or something, or some kind of benefit to the developer to build and sell. You know, some inc- density reward or something. I don't know if you, you know, if, if, you know, just some, we need more places for people to live, you know, for more than.
So your argument is that we should make more places for sale. And your suggestion, I think I heard, is that we could condition that somehow. And I guess the question again for Nate would be, can zoning bylaw uh, direct, uh, an applicant to build for sale rather than build for rent?
Or if you get an extra, you get an extra density bonus.
Well, that's what I mean, direct. I mean, incentivized, I suppose I should have said.
All right, but we need more than that because then they would just be bought, or people want to rent them for high rents. And that currently happens in town.
I, I, I understand that, but I hadn't, I hadn't got to that point because I was dealing with Janet's supposition that it's better to build them for sale and for rent because, and, uh, you know, we could then get to exactly your point, uh, which is why bother?
Well, see, think about, selling place isn't also, it's, is it? I mean, I know, um, regular folk who live there, um, I don't know if they own new units or they're renting them. But they're, they're cheaper. They're definitely cheaper, you know? And then there's that place over on Old Farm Road that's all, just these funky kind of northwest places. Those are not expensive. They come up for sale.
Yeah, but I guess I see, I mean, I, I think like, maybe let's keep an eye on what's for sale around town. And is it, is it green leaves when those little units are on for sale and right in the sale? As I was saying, great rental opportunity. Buy this, you know, two bedroom apartment. And so unless the price, right, unless the price is just somehow reduced to an affordable price. And even then, how do you stop someone from buying and renting it? Unless it's a, I guess, a, uh, a board of condos that will say, no, you can't rent if you're on it. Which is possible. I mean, along the exit way. Uh, anyway.
Well, that could be, it's an exploration for the committee for sure.
Sure, sure, sure. Uh, Fred, go ahead. I'm waiting.
Uh, yeah, I, um, couple of observations. One is that, that long term, the only solution to this is uh, to do what the planning board's been doing in, in the overlay discussions. And that is shift the market. Uh, and that, that's hard to do and it's time consuming. Uh, you don't get to, you know, doing that. You have to wait till stuff comes online. You not waving your hand and saying, okay, the maximum you can rent this for is this,
Hmm.
uh, which is, uh, is gonna turn out to be contrary to state law anyway. So, um, yeah, I, I, uh, it's, 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 it's a long process, but we are absolutely fully engaged in it. And good for us. Let's keep, let's keep doing it.
Yeah.
And, uh, it, it does mean having honest, honest conversations with people who want to, uh, waive the legislative want. Well, just like, uh, our options on uh, uh, accessible dwelling units have been constrained by state legislation. Our options on regulating zoning, uh, regulating rental uh, prices are equally constrained by the Massachusetts general laws. And that's the elephant in the room.
Well, also the, the.
Yeah, I have my hand up.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I'm gonna poke in here. Um, I was thinking of the conversation as it applies to the Archipelago Building at Atkins Corner. They're looking for an extra floor, which is not typically allowed in that, in that zone. Um, is there the opportunity to say, okay, so you are, you are asking for additional, you, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a mixed use building, which, which right out of the, out of the gate gives them the opportunity to build as many units as they want, as much as the site will, will accommodate. They're asking for an additional hu- uh, floor. Is that the opportunity to say, okay, in, in exchange for that extra floor, we are looking for the following conditions of, of either composition or um, or saleability or, or um, you know, sort of rent, rent caps, that kind of thing without, whether it's, whether it's officially, um, uh, yes, they have to meet in- inclusionary zoning, uh, requirements. But I think there's, there's such a great incentive, um, to have a mixed use building as a, as a tool for the developers. It is the reason that we're seeing as many buildings as we are because they're mixed use. And it allows them to, you know, add so many extra units that they weren't previously allowed to do. So, you know, what are, what are some of the trade offs? That's my question.
Yeah, I was gonna say, um, this, this is under, that product is under a hearing, two hearings by the planning board. So I, I would, I don't want to talk about it.
Okay.
Here, given that, but, but Pam, could you, um, send, send, uh, send me an email or, you know, the department, the planning department email on that. And then we can forward it to the board and it can be part of the record and discuss at the hearing, yeah.
Thank you. I want to circumvent.
Yep. Uh, Janet, come on.
Good old open meeting law. Um, I was also just, you know, thinking about, you know, ownership opportunities. Like, there's a lot of town owned property that we're always wondering what to do. And what about, you know, giving it to a developer and saying, you know, develop it, but prices have to be capped at 450 a unit. Um, it can be done. It doesn't all have to cost 650 a unit and just sell. You know, it's like, you know, I don't know. I mean, we actually have a lot of, you know, I just, just start moving this out and filling the neighborhoods and.
That's how Cherry Hill Cohousing, uh, came into existence. Exactly that process.
I don't write the show.
I was thinking similarly, you know, you asked if their first public private partnership with the Fieldstone government, which is luxury housing, basically. Um, I was wondering if the town would ever do that kind of thing, if not in the opposite direction. Like, my, my understanding of that arrangement is, it's just a super long lease of the land, the developer, do nothing else.
Yeah, we.
I don't know if the town's interested in that, but.
No, we've talked about, sorry, this is Nate, just, I mean, we've, you know, staff has talked about a few town owned properties that we, we could do that. Um, yeah, we're, so we still talk about it. Actually, we, the idea would be that we staff could go through the permitting, basically get a development, um, approved with a special subdivision or a special permit, it's like an interview, whatever. And then we could dispose of it to a developer with conditions that we buy so many units down at cost or offer them for sale. And so, um, yeah, it's something we've discussed. And I asked Mass Housing Partnership if they've heard of that in other communities and they or they're, they're looking into it, but they hadn't heard of it. Um, some of it is just like, it can get really expensive per unit. Um, but I agree. I feel like the market can develop affordable housing or housing cheaper than what we're hearing it costs to develop affordable housing projects. So, um, I, I, you know, I just feel like, right, if, you know, Valley says it's $600,000 to build a 1,200 square foot unit on slab without a garage. Or, you know, um, a lot of other amenities. I mean, there'll be nice units, passive house up in North Amherst, but, you know, say 600,000, when you know a, a private developer could develop a 2,400 square foot house with a two car garage on an acre for, I don't know, say it's 350 or 4, I, could, could we, could a town do something like that? And, yeah, so I think there's a few properties we've looked at doing something like that. Um, and it's, we still, Rob and I talk about, still talk about it on one or two sites. And, uh, we're more and more, we are getting more serious about trying to do something like that, you know, dispose of a property with those conditions and see if anyone's interested.
Yeah, sounds, sounds great.
See, I'm just gonna suggest that this seems like a, a good topic for a longer conversation on this committee. So why don't you hold that as a, as a topic that can be put on for a
Sure.
20 minute conversation. Maybe we could ask Nate to tell us where the sites are or show the possibilities. Maybe we could go and look ourselves or think about ourselves. Maybe we could individually uh, search this for other towns or something like that, whatever the key words, search words would be. And then come a little bit informed with some of our own, uh, thoughts. But I, I, I liked, uh, because this is just one more way. I mean, if it's a small site, you can give it to Habitat and we can build four houses on it. Uh, we have that capacity. Um, if it's 20 houses, I'm not so sure that Habitat can do it, but somebody can.
Hmm, yeah, good idea, Bruce. Thank you. All right, um, I'm feeling housing doubt for the night.
Yeah, you probably want to snooze and get yourself ready to get off at Springfield.
Yeah.
Where are you now?
Uh, that's one in New Haven. Not quite there yet.
So do you get off in Springfield or North Hampton?
Uh, this trip Springfield. The timing just was wrong for North Hampton. Last week I did North Hampton, it was really nice. Easy.
Yeah. Okay, well, I'm housing that too. I, thank you, Pam. Thank you, Janet, for joining us. And, uh, thank you.
Yeah, thanks everyone.
I, this is an unusually, uh, positive and enjoyable conversation. Uh, uh, may, maybe not so unusually. I typically enjoy the planning board conversations, but, uh, this was, this was.
We're just nerds. We're just nerds.
Goodbye, nerds.
Okay, good night, everyone. Bye.
Bye, Dave.